It's six, eight degrees out, something like that.
I heard Bree say it was almost forty degrees rise this morning.
Yeah.
They, they, they blame, I believe she said it was, she says almost forty degrees rise and they've been down in the thirties.
Well, I think it's really the weekend before the big rainfall rain, Sunday.
Saturday, yes, thirty percent.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, that's not really a big.
Or Sunday, one of the other.
I'll take, I'll take all those.
Same right, yeah, same.
Boy, you be mowing grass here about two weeks.
I'm mowing mine, sir.
Let's shut.
We have a little rough mess coming in about to talk, I'm trying to chop the grass out.
Oh, I was driving back in Columbia Sunday and I could smell.
I believe it's wild, I don't think it's certain.
You can smell them a mile away.
Oh, you sure can.
Hitting them.
I was in the car here yesterday, man, it was people out there.
I sprayed my.
Everybody's out Saturday too, I tell you, can beat us.
I would, I would.
I think it's two, four degrees outside here, it'd kill them, no wonder, why would I do that? You know, most all the weed.
Yeah, anything that's wooden, steamy, like, like this. But. Working man, working man.
They want to be able to have a property to pay it off.
He gets me, he goes, oh, shit.
Right in there, some water. Right in there.
Yeah, it's kind of rough, man.
There, baby. It was probably made for him. Where comes another?
You're on call, man.
Yeah.
Ferguson told me he was gonna be on Zoom. She's like me, she got, she got it morning at seven. Well, I.
This is good.
Tennessee in that game.
We got the chat in here.
I'll stick around, we'll have a good meeting next week. Back sidewalks, all kinds of stuff. And, uh, new subdivision out here by Blackiship. Your face is like, you'll be on the left of it.
Who's, uh?
Common.
Who did you say, common? Who did you say, common?
Yeah, except for front of it, it's gonna be, front lot's gonna be commercial. Back behind it.
You said, sorry?
Huh?
Who did you say, common?
Uh, somebody told me that's who it was. I don't know. I don't know.
No, you're talking about the one in front of the van, this is back this side of Dinkus.
That one down at, uh, Stuffer. That old guy sold it. Wait about three, two and a half hours. I heard, I heard he got, I heard he got that place for it. Four hundred thousand. Stuffer College. That's every, old time, that's getting, where that subdivision area will be in the rocks. Somebody out of California, dog. I don't want to make some money out there.
Like two hundred thousand dollars in dimension.
Yep.
The name is an engineer and comes up, he makes money.
I can do that.
If it goes through.
Do I?
If it goes through.
I never could be that much. Blackiship, side Blackiship, right?
I think it's, uh, twenty-five to twenty-eight, maybe. I saw the flat, but I don't remember.
I saw it too, but I didn't count this, I didn't count the slots, I just looked at the flat.
Basically going in and three goes both ways.
Is it four years?
Water department go get ready.
I know it's.
Huh? All these subdivision.
That was reserved in the.
Can you build, can you put meters in fast stuff? Well, it's a good thing, you got gas, sewer, water, always out there, just past Blackiship.
But it's on a, on a natural gas.
All we gotta do, run underneath the road.
No reason not to.
Run underneath the roads.
Everything just talk about eighteen more years.
I got a cousin, husband just passed away about two, three, four months ago, and, uh, she lives in Mount Junior. They, uh, had about a six hundred, live at a six hundred something thousand. And, uh.
They didn't tell me about.
So after, so with this girl living, maybe she knew his room, real, but it, it didn't make. Come to her, she said, well, give me a month or two, but I gotta get, get my thoughts about it. She come back, she sold it, sold it for full price, but now she gotta move in with her son, she got the place now.
Make sure you sell. I'd like to.
That's it.
I told her back, back, like, seven o'clock, if you say no, we right out, say no.
Yeah, for me, they sold, some house on the Marshall County, more than that, Kenny. We sold the property, eight thousand.
Okay, I just wanna look at what theater, like those ones, you know, some series are more seven dollars and some of them will buy this lot.
And you own the river. One was paying me thirty, thirty-eight thousand, one will pay forty-three thousand. Would be that a lot. For me, I will have lots down there over the river creek.
Yeah.
I, I could get about a lot, so, I'd probably get eight, eight, ten lots down there, right at the road ghost street. If you're going on the road there to the right, or just overlooks it, overlooks that creek.
You probably get a ton of water, huh?
Shit, you don't have.
Right first. Gee, the property will have a shot.
If it, uh, half, a lot, maybe get thirty or forty thousand dollars for it.
But that, I bet.
A lot. You have a house, ain't it? Build a cabin, build a cabin home to overlook that creek, see.
Definitely know, um, what the.
I'd be careful how I process it.
I know, I, I've been, me, to write them a letter, come up, tear their, tear their thing in half and send it back though.
I have to get that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get.
Don't give what's gonna happen.
I'm gonna end up getting it to my kids.
Uh.
I need that.
I gotta give. Yep. No, it's, it's my service out here. Oh, oh.
Well, I've got one, is it even?
I mean, I can give you the pass, so.
I'm gonna have to transfer it down over the last year, not the last. What about the, the wife, the back, cool.
Wow.
How about the phone? Can you make that on that?
Keep, keep trying, you don't.
There should be a phone number if you call him.
Okay, that's Mr. Walsh, he says he was having trouble getting on, he tried to use the phone in his computer.
If you can't get on online, there's a phone number, he can call to come in and be on, phone.
Yeah, I, I'd suggest that. Uh, ready to get started?
Switch your phone.
Okay, I can call, it's, uh, may I know if Rita's gonna be here, cause. Blue, or is she on blue?
She may be on Zoom, I'm looking to see.
Are you on Zoom anyway?
And then, could you repeat that, I think you said something.
I was asking if Rita was on Zoom, but I'm not seeing her.
I don't see her.
Okay, good. I know we have a lot of, I don't know where.
Don't leave yet, what do you?
I call this, uh, meeting of the county commission, this is a special call meeting. Uh. I'm trying to find this crowd, I don't see her, so, will.
Rita will be here in five minutes.
Rita will be here in five minutes.
She's coming to the courthouse.
Coming to courthouse, I heard, so, you know, this whole five minutes?
Let's, let's wait. All right, it's just hard when you're trying to deal with two different ways, mayor, appreciate all you do to make that happen. Thank you, you too. Once we get rolling here, we will need a motion to, uh, conduct the meeting by virtual meeting as well, that'd be our first order of business, it's not on the agenda that way. That'll be the first thing we'll do, then we'll have Miss, uh, Rita called role, and we only have the one resolution that we have on the agenda for this meeting. That will be the only business that we will have, uh, to conduct. If you haven't had a chance to look that over, it's on the back, it is in the page, if you missed it, you mentioned to be reading through that, you have it already. If we could, let's go ahead and start our meeting, pledge allegiance, please. I forced to have ten for me to not do that. Join me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under. Mr. Luther, would you mind giving us word? Would you mind saying prayer for?
God, I have a father, Lord, thank you for not to fail your praise. Heavenly Father, I pray that you bless everyone inside of my whole system. Father, we pray that you would give us a wisdom, conduct, give us some asking citizens of Paris County. Father, we ask that you bless this nation that we give in, and we pray, Lord, that everybody is strengthened, thank you, my thank you, Ron Bowers, and thank you, Lord, for the, for the vaccine that's seen become ready and available to all of us. Bless tonight, Lord, and as we, as best from this place, please do not release it from your city, in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and our Savior, we ask it, amen.
Amen. One big say, please. I will go ahead and call it role. Uh, Ken Buckmaster.
I'm taking on one.
Okay. Jane Burton, here, Jerry Ford.
Yeah.
Bonnie Taylor.
Here.
Boy Dicky.
Yeah.
Richard Harsh.
Here.
Gary Clarity.
Here.
Bill Ferguson.
Here.
Richard Johnson. Action. Beverly Atwood.
Here.
Mary Ann Baker.
Here.
Rachel Jones.
Here.
Steve Whit.
Here.
White Jewel. Amber Russell.
Here.
Linda Sue Johnson. So we have Johnson and Johnson, next to. Mr. Gregory, here, Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Landon Gully.
Present, here.
David Knox.
Here.
I think we only have two actions.
Don't forget to, our student.
Oh. I'll press your name.
Ethan Dogg is.
He's, he's. I'm only thinking, I keep telling it. We would have a motion to conduct this, uh, meeting by virtual options. Ms. Jones and Mr. Gregory have a second. Call in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will. We have one resolution for this call meeting, uh, this is resolution twenty, twenty-one, oh, seven, seven, eleven, the N C B grant application. Uh, mayor, I'll let you explain this, please.
Well, before I get started, also, I want to, we have representatives from Tennessee Central Economic Authority on campus, Dan Titcomb and President Charlie Lyons, and also representatives from Greater National Regional Council, that's Matt Von Lunen. They have been working on this grant, it's for a site development grant through the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development to do sewer line extension in the Powercom Park. They've actually been running it from what's called the north campus to the south campus, so right now, the south campus does not have sewer access, so this will be extending it down there to make that site more marketable. Uh, they've been working on this internally, and after working on it for a while, decided that it probably had to go through the county, so they contacted the meeting and we set up this call meeting. Uh, do have, have a support resolution, and that's what was in your package you handed out earlier tonight. This is a grant up to five hundred thousand dollars, there is a ten percent local match, however, the Tennessee Central Economic Authority is gonna pay the local match and any other expenses related to this grant, so basically, the county is serving as a pass through, we will receive the funds and then, uh, write the check out to Tennessee Central, they're gonna give us all the documentation. The Greater National Regional Council is gonna serve as the grant administrator on this, so they're actually gonna be the one taking care of all the paperwork and organizing everything, and that won't be staffed with the county before and through the G N R Cs, where best we're asking as a pass through, so. At this time, I'll turn it over to, uh, Charlie Lyons or Dan Titcomb, whichever wants to speak on the grant from the Tennessee Central side, and there was online, uh, taking the field. Uh, Charlie, you're still here?
Thank you, mayor, thank you, Mayor Chambers, and thank you, uh, Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, this is a, uh, a grant, and this is a, um, procedure installing, uh, a sewer line of which we've done before, but in this case, uh, we needed to go through the county, uh, and, uh, we also have the water department more involved, and we're working with the G N R C. We've worked with G N R C, uh, specifically Matt, that is on this project several times, uh, he comes out to Triostail County periodically, uh, but, uh, we had a project last year that looked in the south campus, and if you don't know the, the south campus, if you have gone ever to Powercom, it is, uh, the closest, uh, section to the river, or it is on the south side of the prison, the Triostail Turner Prison. Uh, it does not have any sewer whatsoever, so we need to at least run a main line, uh, I, I would call this the phase one. Uh, we're trying to be assertive, but not spend money unnecessarily, uh, and as the mayor said, we will be responsible, uh, not only for the matching, but if, uh, this, so, it's on record, if, uh, expenses come up, um, Tennessee Central will be responsible. Um, so all financial, uh, and then Matt and, and Dan, uh, Matt Von Lunen and Dan Titcomb are working close hand in hand together, um, they will keep me aware of any additional expenses, and, uh, we will work through that, whether that's with engineering or construction, um, so, we just wanna assure you that, that, uh, and we have, we worked, uh, many of them may know A R C Automotive, I want you to know, we're not inventing something or creating something, when A R C Automotive came in, we did this very similar thing, uh, to get them water, and just more or less an individual sewer line, uh, it did go through the mayor's office, um, and I believe Matt was on that project, uh, for G N R C. So it's nothing new, but it does require, uh, which is a, a good thing, uh, it does require a resolution that you are aware of and, and have approved, uh, and just so you realize, this grant is a state of Tennessee Department of Economic Community Development grant, and it's called Site Development Grant, and it, the, the very reason for this grant is to help industrial sites be improved or become more marketable, uh, or to, to work, uh, with a community to help put us in a position, and that's what we're trying to do, is be proactive. Uh, we do have two sites that we've worked through the state, uh, previously that are ready, uh, one of those may be in the twenty-twenty-one, may be taken, uh, by an, an industry, we hope, uh, the other one, we are constantly just marketing, uh, so, I'll, I'm open to any questions, uh, any thoughts or comments, that sounds dangerous, but I, I'll, I'll go with it.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, uh, Matt Von Lunen from Greater National Regional Council is on here as well, and I would like, if he could speak a little bit until how the G N R C will serve as the grant administrator and the role they play on this, and then after that, if the county, if the commissioners got any questions, they can ask them to Tennessee Central or Greater National Regional Council or myself, so, Mr. Von Lunen, if you could speak on kind of G N R C's role in this grant.
Absolutely, mayor, thank you for having me, everyone, on the commission, I appreciate it, my name is Matt Von Lunen, I'm with the Greater Nashville Regional Council, uh, as Charlie said, I've worked with the county and Tennessee Central for a, a number of grant opportunities here in the past, this one came up as a, another opportunity to help assist some of the properties over in Powercom. Uh, essentially, the, as Charlie said, this is from the State Department of Economic and Community Development, and, uh, they require that if a grant application is successful, that you use a, an administrator, uh, throughout the life of the project, and we, at, at the Greater National Regional Council, have done that, uh, for multiple projects in the county, uh, as well as, uh, multiple other site development grants throughout our thirteen county region, right now, I'm currently working on two others in other communities, uh, in our thirteen county region, so, we, uh, we absolutely have the experience to do this, um, uh, Charlie is, and, uh, the mayor are correct, we would be, uh, we would take the lead on, uh, ensuring proper procurement policies were followed, uh, ensuring that all the requests for payments and everything are documented appropriately, should there be any change orders or budget revisions, anything like that, we take the lead on all of that, uh, work with the, the county and the state, the engineer, the contractor, and everyone to really just, uh, try to keep the, the project moving, uh, as efficiently, uh, as, as possible. Is there anything else you'd like me to speak to, mayor?
No, sir, I'm making that, that should cover.
Okay, okay, well, uh, as Charlie said, I'm also here, uh, in case you have any questions about the application process or the, uh, the, the projects, the administration process as well, please, please let me know.
And the reason, uh, there's such a, a call meeting on this, a grant application deadline is this Friday, so we kinda had to be done real quickly, uh, there was a possibility that you could retroactively approve the resolution, however, I don't think that would go over well with the state, you better go ahead and get the resolution passed and have it ready and submit your application instead of staying, telling them that, we'll pass it here in a couple of weeks, so, that's the reason for the call meeting, so at this time, if any commissioners have any questions, to myself, Mr. Von Lunen, or somebody from Tennessee Central, or you go ahead and ask them, we'll try to give you any question, answer.
Just forward, you're right, man.
Well, mayor, once a time, probably, we're just going forward, and is all of this for industrial?
Yes, sir, this is, uh, it's a site development grant for E C D, it has to be infrastructure, power lines, water lines, those kind of things, to get sites ready to market to potential industry, as far as the timeline, or Mr. Von Lunen and either Charlie or Dan, if you could kinda speak to some of the grant timelines, if you're more familiar with that than I am.
Absolutely, mayor, I'll speak to that, this is Matt Von Lunen again with G N R C, uh, the application does go in, uh, by this Friday, we should know if we're successful in the next month or two, and contracts will likely be out and ready for signature, uh, before the end of June, they like to get them out within the state fiscal year, at that point, uh, we will work with the engineer to complete the, uh, the, the engineering documents, the, the plans and specifications, get that out to bid, uh, the very good chance we could have a bid opening in about September, uh, these are, these are all estimates, of course, but September, October bid opening is, is possible, uh, and then we'd be able to, uh, uh, choose our low bidder, move forward with our contractor, and the, I don't have the engineering documents in front of me, so I can't tell you how long the engineer anticipates construction will last, but it will likely go through the winter. At the end of that, uh, or throughout that process, we'll be managing the contract and the payment process and whatnot, and at the end of it, there's a, there's a closeout period as well, uh, just to, before the final money is, is, uh, approved from the state, we work with them to make sure that we've, uh, we have everything in order. So from beginning to end, we have the application due at the end of, uh, this week, and at the end, I'd say, we'd probably be looking at late winter, early spring, probably about a year from now, uh, if I were to, if I were to estimate it, that really depends on the construction duration, uh, as well as, you know, like any other construction project, you're at the, uh, you're at the graces of mother nature as well, working through, uh, the winter months too.
Or, an answer.
One other question, where how large an area is this going to be, compasses?
It's not a real large area since the sewer line, uh, if you've been in the Powercom side, and you've been from the front village, or excuse me, the north campus, and if you're going down towards the river to go to the right side of the creek, where they used to have the, the sailbox where the creek formed, there's a road through there, and it kinda go right next to that road, so, I mean, as far as area encompasses, I think it's about a half mile, look twice, and of course, that being a sewer line, it's not very wide, so, it's not really gonna have that much impact on the site itself, just really, you wanna go ahead and get this.
Oh, yeah, it's cute.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you, please.
Yeah. Uh, so, it's not gonna have a large impact, I mean, as far as on the site, of course, it's gonna be underground infrastructure once it gets in there, but you really need to have this infrastructure in place, because you'll get requests all the time from potential companies, and they want the infrastructure already on site, they don't have to wait for construction, I give an example, I've been getting numerous ones over the last month, so, it's not unusual, you receive an R F P and have a response required within three, four days, so you've got three or four days to submit your packet and try to get through, up to the, the site selection. So you've got three or four days to submit your packet and try to get through up to the, the site selection process, and if you don't have those things in place, you're eliminated and off the bat. So this is just trying to make that site more marketable going forward and try to attract more industry in here. And that's the, the biggest remaining section of that park is in that south campus, and they're trying to get the infrastructure there to market that.
Mr. Mayor, your question. Since this is a grant, some of them. The tax fees are included in the grant and stuff like this, is this one that way, or is it just the extension of a line of seven?
It was, anything up to five hundred thousand dollars max, it's what the, the state decides they're gonna fund. If they fund it up to max, any expenditure going up five hundred thousand should be covered, so it shouldn't include tax fees in there.
But a lot of them don't include the tax, and some of them do this.
My understanding, this one is supposed to include all expenses for that project, so if there's an initial tap going on to it or something, if somebody's tapping into it, it should be covered, unless it's a business that's already there, wanna tap into it. I think then they would maybe have to pay their fees because it's a sewer tap to their property. But right now, I don't know that that's gonna bother, maybe one that may do that. Right now, it's just to get that infrastructure there to market site going forward and try to attract somebody on that site.
Any other question? Let's will the body. Mr. Ford. Mr. Ford makes a motion to approve. Mr. Burton, for the second.
And Mr. Chairman, I will remind the body that since we're doing this virtually, all meetings have to be, all votes have to be by a little call.
Rita, you wanna do the roll call on this?
Beverly Atwood?
Yes.
Mary Ann Baker? Yes. Ken Buckmaster?
Yes.
Shane Burton? Gary Clarity? Hoy Dickey? Bill Ferguson?
Yes.
Jerry Moore? Buckberry? Landon Gully?
Yes. Yes.
Richard Harsh?
Yes.
The White Jewel? Linda Johnson? Richard Johnson, Jackson, Rachel Jones? David Nolan?
Yes.
Amber Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Taylor? Gary Walsh?
Yes.
Steve Whitaker?
Yes.
Ethan Bowles? Eighteen, yes.
Motion does carry. Come in our, time in our agenda for public comment, anyone here from public liking? Ask a question, make a comment. Seeing none. Have a motion to.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion adjourned.
You're my man. Now, second. Gets a second, all the way. Thank you, Miss Walsh.
Anytime.